Corrections, additions, deletions, or changes to the minutes. Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
You're moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on our agenda is an update by City Manager Robert Kiley on our community engagement meetings.
Thank you Alderman Waldeck and members of the City Council. This evening, we're going to actually go over the topic that was of a recent community engagement meeting, but before I ask Mike Thomas to come forward and talk about sanitation, the future of refuse recycling, and yard waste, I wanted to just briefly recap sort of where we have been and where we are going. The council will remember that the idea of the community engagement meetings really was an outgrowth of our strategic planning session and ways to, or try to identify ways to engage our residents in more conversation and dialogue about issues facing the community. We have had five community engagement meetings so far. We have three left to go. You have in your packet, what we are referring to as T-forms for the community engagement meetings that have been held so far. At a previous meeting, you had received one for the granny flats that was chaired by Alderman Moore. In your packet, you should have one on differentiated housing opportunities from Alderman Pandeleon, native plantings chaired by Alderman Edelman, refuse and recycling, which we will go over this evening chaired by Alderman Novit, and I believe you have in front of you, this evening is one on water. Where does it come and where does it go? That was recently chaired by Alderman Reisenberg. And I will add that that is currently being aired on cable television, which we've received a lot of compliments about, and I have to say that my only one regret is that we learned as we went along in the process, and we should have televised native plantings as well. That was done chaired by Alderman Edelman. That was, again, well received. We didn't have great turnout there, but everybody who was there really thought that it was informative, and we've actually had some conversations with people from Lake Forest Open Lands and some other organizations about doing another presentation on that subject later this year or early 2014. Tonight, Mike is going to be reviewing this topic on sanitation, and importantly, we're not here to make any decisions, much like our community engagement meetings, but really to give you a sense as to what some of the options are, if any, if we wanted to look at modifying our sanitation service that we have been providing the same way to our residents for so long. But as you'll see from the presentation, the advent of recycling and our new containers that we have has certainly pushed us in a direction that gives us some options and opportunities, and I think that's really what we're looking for this evening. I will also mention, and actually I will turn it back to Madam Chairman, about the next community engagement meeting is being chaired by Alderman Waldeck, and I will let her, I think you might have a copy of a press release in front of you, but I'll let her talk about coming up on September 19th.
Okay. Yeah, Thursday, September 19th at 7:00 at Gordon will be our next community engagement meeting. The topic is the vitality of the Central Business District, something we can all agree upon that's a very unique and special part of our community, and we're going to be discussing, ushering it into the future. What's great about it, what might be done to improve it and to bring it forward into the future. So, we're hoping for some great resident input and a really good discussion. Prior to the meeting, there will be a survey, a survey that was developed by Susan Kelsey, and that's going to be available online. So, we can take the survey, and residents can take the survey, and we'll have that input and that data available to discuss during the meeting.
So with that, I'll ask Mike to come up.
Great, thank you, Madam Chairman, Honorable Mayor, members of the committee, the whole. This evening, as Bob noted, staff would like to present to you our PowerPoint on the future of refuse yard waste, recycling, and our compost center, and hopefully get some feedback from yourselves as to whether or not you agree on some of the opportunities that we have proposed, or if you have some other ideas as well, we would love to hear them. To begin with, once you know it, there we go. To relate it back to the strategic plan, as we noted, there are a handful of categories that with the recently adopted strategic plan, the timely review of our sanitation services as well as other services is why we, one of the reasons we're presenting this topic. Fiscal stewardship, as we noted in the strategic plan, to retain quality of life for residents throughout, or excuse me, through cost-effective responsive city services. Community character and livability, the ability to continue to engage the community in discussion, respectful debate, and decisions about the future of our community and the services involved therewith. Environmental stewardship, promote and expand our recycling program, which we have, and we're going to continue to expand more on. And then finally, human capital and service delivery, the various studies that we're doing on services that the city offers. This is a chart that our Finance Director Elizabeth Hollis presented to City Council multiple times, but it's the infamous chart that shows in FY 2017 where the lines cross, where the proposed expenditures will be higher than the revenues received. And as a result, it's one of the reasons we're looking at not only sanitation, but again, other operations to see if there's ways we can trim those costs or possibly acquire new additional revenues. Again, this chart has been shown multiple times, but again, the number of employees per household from FY 92 to current, and how that has dropped over the various fiscal years.
Michael, is that the whole city staff, or?
Yes, that is, that is the entire city staff. That is not specific to sanitation. I will get to that. I've got a chart on number of sanitation personnel specifically. The city consolidation exercises, obviously, one here is the sanitation collection program, as well as the shared fire services that the city is doing, a study on central dispatching, as well as shared IT services. Again, all of these items tying back to our strategic plan. To review for everyone, the responsibilities of our sanitation section, and this is specifically to sanitation, although the section we call is Streets in Sand, this is just the sanitation group. Twice-a-week backdoor refuse collection, twice-a-week curbside yard waste, once-a-week curbside recycling. They also manage the compost center on the weekends. We offer the special curbside collection for bulk items. They provide all the litter collection throughout town. They collect the refuse cans uptown. They separate any of the metal that any of the residents leave at the curb, we bring back to the shop. We literally have got Gaylord boxes, which are very large, thick cardboard boxes. We take that metal and put the copper in one box, brass in another, aluminum, stainless. Lou Decker, who's here this evening, watches and monitors those prices. When they go up, we sell that metal. Just another way of making money for the city. We collect and separate electronics for recycling as well. We receive different dollars for different types of electronics, so computers, computers themselves are worth more than monitors, so we separate all those, and we'll turn around and market those, sell them to the highest or the company that'll give us the most. Right now, a lot of that material's actually going up to Minneapolis. They're a major participant in our annual snow program, not only in the street and sidewalk plowing operations, but our hauling of the Central Business District in the overnight hours. They collect tree debris after major windstorms. Forestry section is out trimming and removing right-of-way trees that have been damaged. All the material that residents bring to the curb, sanitation will send extra trucks out and pick up that material. Many years ago, probably five or seven years ago, we provided collection to schools, churches, and businesses throughout the city when there was a refuse union strike. We were not union, and all of these establishments in town weren't getting their garbage picked up. We went ahead and offered it and picked the refuse up. They assist with the annual pothole program. They define what areas are bad since they're on your streets twice a week, every week. They come back to, with a list for us in the springtime, telling us how bad various potholes are. They provide mutual aid for neighboring communities. Two years ago, Winnetka had a major storm come through. They had seven inches of rain in a five-hour period. A good amount of material was placed at the curb. We went down and assisted them on a Wednesday to pick up all that material and dispose of that. They paid, obviously, for the disposal, but it was a mutual aid that we could provide to them in a very short period of time. Special projects, Route 60 median, assisted with that on a minor role, but they still provided some assistance. When we're having issues with water, where we need people to shut off, we write flyers, we have the garbage guys hand them out. Again, they're going to all the stops, they know all the houses. And then they also provide our Finance Department with information on low water meter reads. So if we read the meters once a month, if somebody has an abnormally high read or a low read, our garbage guys will get back to the Finance Department and say that house is vacant, it's under construction, whatever the case may be. But it's just good information to provide back to Finance.
Michael, what do communities that use private refuse companies do for snow removal and debris removal? Do they contract separately for other private firms for that?
They will, well, for example, Highland Park contracts out refuse, recycling, yard waste, snow removal, and majority of that is done in-house. Lake Bluff contracts out half, I'd say two-thirds, maybe three-quarters of their snow removal is in-house, a quarter of it is contracted out. We go compare ourselves with Glencoe and Winnetka that have in-house garbage. They, they plow snow just like we do.
What do the people that plow snow in Highland Park do in the summer?
They're part of the streets, parks, forestry group, water and sewer group, those, those groups. Personnel versus households. In 1998, our sanitation section was collecting 5,800 homes. Again, we only collect single-family homes. We do not collect multi-family. We have a few duplexes in town we collect, but we do not collect multi-family, we do not collect businesses. 1998, we had 16 full-time, four-seasonal, and four-summer employees totaling 24. 2013, you can see the number of increase in homes, up to 6,462. We reduced our staff to 10 and a half in four-seasonals, from 11-month to nine-month. So we've been very creative in the ways we pick up garbage. We tow scooters. Some of the equipment we use to dump the carts at the curb, it's all about time. It's, it's, it's all tied to us being able to start collection at 7:00 AM, and we've got to get to that landfill by 4:29, 4:28 in the afternoon before they lock the gate, because we don't want to come back with a garbage truck full of garbage. So, it's a balance throughout the day. We've got to get the town picked up, we've got to get heading to the landfill by 10:00 to 4:00 every day. A quick review of our sanitation budget, totaling $2,237,000 for this fiscal year. 54% of it, as you can see, is personnel-related. It's paying for our guys and their benefits. $115,000 is paying for managing our compost operations, meaning the leaves, the brush, all the material that is ground up out there and put into winrows. We have a contract that represents 5%. Disposal, approximately $400,000, 18%. Fuel and maintenance for our equipment, 22% at $493,000. We have $23,000 budgeted for minor equipment and other materials that we might use out at the compost center, or things we may need to buy to do some work on some of our equipment, and then a very minor amount, the yard waste stickers as well.
Michael, quick question, I'm sorry. The, can you flip back? The $115,000 number for compost operations, is that a reflection of any overtime, or is that straight time for the guys in there?
No, that is, that's, that's a contractual agreement we have with P. Clifford Miller Associates.
Okay.
Period. It's $115,000 annually, we pay him per month. His company actually accepts our yard waste, grinds it up, puts it in winrows, turns it throughout the year, turns into compost. He takes a majority of it, some of it we get back as well for the residents to pick up on the weekend.
Okay.
So that, that is tied specifically to that operation. Some of the questions we, we were asking, we didn't have the greatest turnout at our community engagement meeting, we had four or five residents, but we asked them how many people recycle at the curb, and this is simply a breakdown of the number of carts, different sizes we have. 335 of them are still on what we refer to as privates, which are the long driveways on Green Bay, Waukegan, Stonegate, some of these areas that we cannot get a large truck down, and they themselves have a difficult time bringing a cart to the curb. So we will go ahead and run a scooter down to pick up their bin. Ask the rhetorical question of how many people participate in twice-weekly yard waste at the curb. Compost center, these are very interesting numbers. We asked how many people use the compost center throughout the year. 2011, we had 25,822 trips. In 2012, we had 26,641 trips. We can't answer any questions about was it the same person on Saturday that came Sunday? We simply are clicking the number of times the cars are coming in. It's a very popular site, residents love it, they love to be able to get rid of their material that they have, so we're proud to operate and manage that site. 2011, the community survey results, 78.8% of the residents rated garbage recycling collection as very satisfied. The interesting thing with that was that it was the highest very satisfied percentage out of the 19 questions that were asked on various services throughout the city, various departments. That one got the highest rank. One of the ideas we're throwing out for discussion is potentially doing another survey with residents to see if they are interested in moving to once-a-week collection. We did a survey back three years ago in August of 2010, we had a 51% response rate, which in the world of surveying is phenomenal. Granted, I was, we were all hoping it was going to tell us decisively, yes, we want carts, or no, we don't, and as you can imagine, the results were right down the middle. So, the potential is there that we could see similar results as well, but at least it's a different option that we could do to engage the community. The cost per ton for disposal, you can see the green line represents CPI, the blue line represents price per ton. We're approximately right now at $54.88 per ton on disposal costs, and obviously, that will continue to increase. So it's, it supports the idea of why we want to recycle more, the less we have to bring to that landfill, the less those tipping fees go up. We are tipping fee, as I noted, disposal budgets at $397,000. We were upwards of 450 about two or three years ago, and we've just continued to cut that to reflect the increase in recycling. A chart showing our annual tonnage. The blue represents refuse, the green is recycling, purple is yard waste. As you can see, there is a downward trend where we have less refuse in the city, which is good, and recycling is increasing as well. Interestingly enough, the decrease on yard waste, our belief is that that is because when we instituted the dollar sticker per bag, people really began to bring, or bundle of brush, realized that the compost center on the weekend was free, and people began to bring their material out there. So we're not seeing as many stickers at the curb as we used to. Other reasons that we believe, reduction in refuse, recession in economy, people are making fewer purchases, people are eating out more, obviously, we expanded our recycling program as well. Those pictures are actually of the recycling ramp that we have. The top picture shows us getting the material out of the truck. We scoop it up with the unloader, it goes into an open-top trailer. We get about 20 tons in that trailer. That trailer gets hauled out of the compost center about four times a week. So we're at about 80 tons a week, maybe a little bit less in recycling.
Michael, did it strike you as counterintuitive that with all these things on the recession and fewer purchases, that another explanation is people are eating out more?
It's, it, things are somewhat unique at times.
Maybe it's fast food, fast food restaurants.
That's, that could be it, that could be it. The revenue history, very important to point out, the, the first column shows the amount of money that we have received over the past 13 or 14 fiscal years on the sale of our recyclables. Scrap metal, as I mentioned, some of that has been actually accounted for in our recyclables, but again, the brass, aluminum, copper, stainless, all that material is sold. Yard waste stickers, you can see the revenue there, and then special pickups, if a resident calls and says, "I've got a couch at the curb, can you come pick it up?" It's 40 bucks for us to come by and pick it up, and there's, there's the revenue there. So, revenue that comes right back to the general fund in the city. Future opportunities for sanitation. Number one, should the city consider once-a-week backdoor refuse collection, as well as once-a-week curbside collection for yard waste? So it would be once-a-week backdoor garbage, once-a-week curbside recycling, once-a-week curbside yard waste. Going back to FY 17, when we're talking about the lines crossing and looking for additional revenue, as an additional revenue source, should the city consider collecting schools and various commercial institutions around town, not only the refuse but recycling? In order to do that, the City Council would need to modify Section 1823 of the City Code, because right now, it specifically states we only pick up single-family homes. So that would need to be modified before we, we do any of that. The potential of offering roll-off services to residents. Roll-offs, the picture shown here, that's a roll-off container, that's a 17-yard roll-off. We've got different sizes, 3, 5, 12, 17. But when residents are doing projects on their home, they typically will call for a roll-off box. It's another service that we can provide. It's revenue that we could bring into the city, rather than having a private company do the same thing. Managing the composting operation with in-house staff. As I noted, we spend $115,000 a year doing that. Should we look to invest in our own equipment and manage that ourselves in-house? Turn around and market the material, deliver the material to residents, offer that service, make some money for the city. Look at potentially accepting additional yard waste from surrounding municipalities. We'd be very careful with this. I would probably look into doing just leaves, not, not the grass. The grass tends to have an odor to it when it breaks down, the leaves do not. So potentially looking at mulching and composting leaves from neighboring towns. As I mentioned, delivering, selling compost and woodchips, and then offering special collection services to residents on the weekend, if they have big parties on Friday or Saturday evening, and they just come by and pick up stuff, we can do that. A budget comparison for twice-a-week collection, along with the twice-a-week curbside yard waste, once-a-week curbside recycling, and the compost center. There's a budget comparison if we were to continue with that versus if we go once-a-week, and what impact that would have. Our estimate is that we would reduce three personnel, we would reduce four pieces of equipment. You'd still have the same amount charged at the landfill, we still have to get rid of the same quantity, we're just picking it up during one versus two days. No change in the compost operation. The net effect is approximately $175,000 a year. With a home that has an EAV value of $800,000, it's about $18 per year per home.
Hey, Michael.
And with that, we're finished.
So it's 172 divided by the 6,062? Because that's 26 bucks.
172, 765 divided by the 6,462.
Maybe I did something wrong. Okay.
I hope you did and not me. But I believe that was our calculation.
Michael, would it be feasible for people that want it twice a week to charge them for it and, and do that? I mean, even though it wouldn't be every house in the block, it'd be certain ones?
It is, it is possible. I will, I'll be very honest and say, logistically, it becomes somewhat of a challenge. We can do it, and if that's what keeps us in business, then we will absolutely do it. But the challenge of having the route driver, it's not the same route driver every day, and he comes down telegraph, and he's, he's looking in a book and saying, "Oh, I got to get these three twice a week, and these, I only get once a week." We can do it, we absolutely can do it, it's just initially, it may be a little bit challenging. And again, I go back to, we can't start collection until 7:00 AM for the noise ordinance, we don't want to bring garbage tracks, garbage trucks back to our shop full, so we have that defined period of time that we got to get this town picked up and dumped. So, to answer your question, yes, we can do it, we just need to work through it.
So wouldn't it just be easier to keep it the way it is? Charge $20 per home per year and turn that into $172,000 of revenue instead of savings?
27, just seeing, I just did the math. 26.7, not 18. But your point is?
The point's sort of the same.
Yeah, I did. Sorry.
Sure, that's a possibility as well, absolutely. It's, is one of the things we have discussed in staff, and we presented it here, this opportunity of going out and looking for opportunities to pick up waste from, we call it, the private side, Market Square, all the businesses on Field Drive, hospital, college, schools. They all have got the same heavy garbage trucks driving down our streets every day, and we're passing them by every single day. So from one standpoint, the wear and tear on the streets, but not only that, but logistically, we're there. So, again, looking to potentially offer a service for some, for some revenue for the city.
Generally speaking, and I know it's hard to estimate, what is the potential revenue that we could get if we had commercial hauling opportunities?
We haven't gone that far. We began to actually have some discussions with Market Square and the schools. A lot of it will depend upon the service that they are looking for, meaning the frequency, the size of the container, do they want recycling, yes or no? Do we look at offering this roll-off service? It's, it's, it's hard to estimate right now. I, if that's something that the City Council would like to see, staff would prefer to put together a business plan and bring it back to you for your approval, because I really would like to do a little more research to get a better idea of what those opportunities are.
Michael, do any other municipalities do that, that you're aware of?
Yes. Winnetka and Glencoe do pick up some of the privates. I'm not sure about Evanston, Skokie, Chicago, Chicago does, I know that. But as we go down the North Shore, Lake Bluff, Highland Park contract out, Will Met has contracted out, ourselves, Skokie, Evanston, Glencoe, Winnetka, still have all in-house refuse. And in speaking to Glencoe and Winnetka, as well as some people from Highland Park and Lake Bluff, they do do some of that. They don't do a full, broad range, they have focused on schools and institutions, for example.
What are the unintended consequences, if any, of a public service trying to compete against a private organization, in this case, waste disposal? against a private organization, in this case, waste disposal?
Good question. I don't know if there...
This makes all the sense in the world, but then, I go back to philosophically, I'm always against private trying to get so big to allow themselves to compete against the public. And then, where does that, where does that take you? I don't have an answer for that. It's a rhetorical question, unfortunately, but something I'm just struggling with a bit.
Right. And I think one of the things, if we were to look into picking up private institutions, schools, et cetera, I would want to make absolutely sure that we don't get in over our heads. That, again, we put together a very thorough business plan, bring it to you for your approval, and ask, "Is it worth it?" Because there's obviously a commitment. Perfect example this weekend, and it's a very small example, but Market House, they've got Waste Management, and Waste Management picked them up on Friday and picked them up this morning. And they called us and said, "There's no way we can, with the art fair going on, have garbage sitting there for two or three days over the weekend." We came on Saturday and Sunday and picked up their material, and they're very appreciative. So, unattended consequences, I'm not sure. I'd have to give some thought to that.
Somehow, it's very easy for me to segue into public doing public, like schools. But, I just, I wonder what you, what are the implications of knowing head-to-head against Waste Management, when they don't have the same opportunity, interestingly?
Correct, correct. It was interesting, the schools were using Veolia, which Veolia's now been purchased by Advanced Disposal. Waste Management came in a couple of years ago and really undercut Veolia, really undercut them. And that's typically how this business works. They will undercut one another to get in the door, have you there for a couple of years, and then they'll take you through the roof on their price. But, the schools, you're right, in the end, it would save taxpayers as well, and the revenue that we could receive from the recyclables goes, again, back into the general fund. So, it's just another opportunity that we could have.
I'd be curious to see what the pro forma numbers look like, and want to make certain that it's something where, it's not just a push, where the revenues and the expenses wash each other, because then what's the point of taking up the time to do it?
Correct, I agree. And the basis for all of this, again, is that we've heard, not only from yourselves, but from many residents, that recycling is going very well, and come those Thursday and Friday collections, a lot of people don't have a lot of material. Some of the larger homes on the east side of town and on the southwest part of town, those homes still on Thursday and Friday have a good amount to pick up. We assume that everybody's second day would be light, that isn't necessarily the case. For most people it is, but for some homes in town, they're heavy on both days. So, I need to, and ourselves and staff need to keep that into consideration as well.
Do you have an idea of what your excess capacity is? You know, to part of Jack's point, other than government getting bigger, I think, if I'm wrong, let me know, Jack, but, you know, at what point would we need to buy another dump truck because we're doing the schools? And where does that lead to our budgets? But, on the other hand, if we're using up excess capacity without needing more capital, then outside of the philosophy of government, or, you know, doing, competing with private business, that would be an economic win for us until we need to hire another person or buy another truck, right?
Correct. And this, again, is all based on once a week.
Can you estimate where that is?
What our capacity would be?
Our excess capacity now, that we would want to fill with extra business?
I would suggest that our excess capacity is there if we go to once a week. If you're asking if we have excess capacity right now with twice-a-week backdoor compost center on the weekend and everything else, we don't. But, if we move to once a week, we will have excess capacity, yes. And to the extent of us being able to pick up some of these stops, logistically in our head, when we say, "My gosh, we're driving down Field Drive at 6:45 in the morning, to be able to hop into Hospira and all these different businesses should be very easy, if we're down near Cherokee, and we're picking up all the residents and we drive into Cherokee and dump their container." It's literally minutes. But, again, as I've suggested, and I agree with you, we need to put together, as Alderman Adelman suggested, a performer and a business plan to know how far is it with the existing equipment and with the existing personnel we would be allowed to go.
These potential savings, do those include not having as many staff doing the garbage pickup?
Yep. We would reduce staff by four personnel, probably the seasonal personnel. And the seasonal personnel are not, most necessarily, they're not your expensive employees. But, we need people that have got CDL licenses. Got to have people that have got CDLs, so if one person calls in sick, we can put another guy on the route, he knows where the landfill is, he can operate the truck, we can still go get the stops. So, we need that, we need that reliability there. I would not get rid of a refuse truck. Those refuse trucks have come in handy so many times, especially with the windstorms that we've had, that they can be used for any material you want, so.
Based on your graph of, what was it, the years, 1992 to 2014, and your numbers, your sanitation staff is down half.
Correct.
You went from 14 to 10, or 24 to 14, and households grew from 5,800 to 6,400? So, that's half, right? I mean, if it starts in the math out.
There is an individual here this evening that we owe all the credit to.
And city staff is down 20%, and you're down 50%?
Lou Decker.
General, the whole city's down.
Lou Decker, our streets and sand supervisor, from day one, came to me and said, "We need to be tighter on how we do this." And if we're ever asked to privatize, he said, "I want to be lean when they ask." And that's a result of him and the different ways...
My question is, what's the minimum number of people?
For, twice a week or once a week?
Well, twice a week or once a week with the private. What's the bare minimum that you need to have employed, so that when they're not doing garbage, they can clear streets of snow and do all the other... You can't get so small, there's a critical point at which you can't go below, even if everybody left town, right? I mean, someone's got to drive the truck.
Correct, correct. So, and I may not understand your question completely, but the staffing level that we have right now allows us to provide the services we're doing, as well as play a primary role in snow. The only way we can look at going to pick up private collections is if we go to once a week. Still offer that compost center on the weekend and provide all the other services, but we've got to free up some employee time to be able to go and get privates. Question of how many privates can we go get, I'm not sure yet. We need to look into that further, if that's something that city council would be interested in us looking into. I don't know if I answered your question or not.
Kind of, I can calculate it.
Mike, I presume we're talking to communities like Lake Bluff, yes? If they're contracting out services? Again, public on public versus...
We have inquired, and we have a copy of their agreement. Highland Park's agreement is on the website. I have spoken with, yes, those communities in general. Haven't spoken to them about connecting up and saying, "Gee, should we look at picking up Lake Bluff garbage?" No. I've simply inquired to say, "Tell me about your contractual agreement, your arrangement, and the services you offer, and what is in and what is not in, and how have you seen those prices escalate over the years, et cetera, et cetera? How happy are the residents?" So, just to gather information primarily, not to seek opportunity.
One final thing, it's just my personal point of view, is at the same time we're talking about how to increase revenue, it seems paramount to me that I'd be wanting to talk about how to get rid of that second day for garbage pickup before I start talking about reducing revenue, increasing revenue. I'd rather go after the expense line first before I go after the top line.
Sure.
Maybe we can sequester it.
The counter to that, $2 a month would make up for that 100 and whatever thousand dollars it is. And knowing how many of my neighbors and people here highly value twice-a-week garbage pickup, I think the goodwill lost in getting rid of that for $2 a month?
50 cents a week.
Is, I don't know, I don't think I would go there myself.
Interestingly, when I was driving here, I asked one of our neighbor's husband and wife, "What did you think about the topic?" And it was interesting, the husband said, "Go once a week," and the wife said, "Absolutely not. That garbage sitting inside our garage, no, I want you guys to come twice a week." So...
Charge Randy $50 a week and charge the Eisenbergs nothing.
But, I understand your point.
It's not $18 a year per home, David's right, it's 20, just under $27. But, $27 is virtually 50 cents a week for the second pickup. I don't have to give it any further thought. There's no way I personally could ever consider cutting back to one day a week when that, the marginal cost of the second pickup is 50 cents, correct?
Correct.
And my second comment is, you probably were able to cut back from 24 employees to 14 because those 65-gallon recycling containers really allowed streamlining a production line of picking up recyclables and started decreasing the amount of refuse that was being picked up, so.
That was a small percentage of it. The larger percentage, if you see how we pick up refuse, we used to have four guys on a route, one guy driving a truck, three guys in the scooter, and they'd all come back to the truck. Now, we actually have the driver who's pulling his own scooter, another guy has a scooter, and they're hop-skipping with the truck. Just much more efficiency. Each guy is picking up 350-plus homes a day. And again, they all, they all very well know that they've got to get those routes done by 10 to 4 and start heading up to the landfill. So, there's not a lot of time to do anything else. But, yes, in gen, yes, that has absolutely helped, that there is less garbage, and that is decreasing the amount, which is helping us, especially on Thursdays and Fridays, get done sooner. And that amount saved is also something we can put towards picking up others as well.
Mike, can I just interject two things? One, I think to go to Alderman Moore's question, because I've asked a question over the years as part of budget conversations. How many more positions can we eliminate and still do the job that we're doing? And I would say that maybe there's one, but there's not many. That, I think, between Lou and Michael, they've gotten that number down to a fairly low level, or as low as we possibly can, and still guarantee that we're able to provide the quality of service that residents want because, you notice, we don't get a lot of complaints about garbage cans around the neighborhood, or tops flying around in the wind and all those kinds of things, which they take very seriously. The story, my next-door neighbor just moved in, wanted to know what her garbage collection day was, and the scooter had come up, and she wanted to know when her recycling day was, and he told her, and then he pulled out, and then about 30 seconds later, he backed up and came up and said, "I told you the wrong day, no, your actual day is this." And she was blown away by that kind of service level from this thing. So, I wouldn't, I would be afraid to say that we could eliminate three or four more bodies and still be able to provide the type of service that we have. But, I think also, Mike, it might be beneficial intuitively, when you look at going from twice a week to once a week, you would think, "Cut it in half." And obviously, the numbers and the vehicles aren't cut in half. So, could you explain why that doesn't occur and why the savings wouldn't be more significant?
Sure. It would be the way we would devise the routes. Again, we would look at collecting over four days, not five, because we need that middle day for maintenance. It's a good amount of equipment, it's pretty heavy equipment. Wednesdays are typically sanitation days and fleet maintenance. So, we divide it up over those four days. We would look at giving each guy his own box, meaning he has his own truck, he has his own scooter, he goes out and gets his 300, 350 homes. That requires, and again, if we have got guys, and I hate saying this, but it is the honest-to-God truth, if we have guys that call in sick or guys that are on vacation, that reduces your workforce. And we still are expected, obviously, to get that material picked up. So, there is that expense in there in that operation to be able to cover and make sure that we've got X number of guys there during the day to pick up that refuse, yard waste, recycling. We've got coverage for the compost center on the weekend, we're able to get the cans uptown, and we're doing litter throughout town as well. So, it's a mix that needs to work.
Michael, on your graph here, if I'm reading this right, it looks like none of our neighboring communities offer twice-a-week service, except Winnetka, you can pay for it.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yeah, that is correct. Glencoe...
Can pay for it too, right?
Correct. Well, yes, you can. This was a very quick, quick phone survey that we did. All of them, Lake Bluff, Highland Park, Glencoe, Winnetka, you can pay for twice-a-week, and you pay. Once-a-week backdoor collection in Highland Park is approximately $32 a month. That includes your recycling at the curbside once a week. We are, if we take our budget of 2237 divided by 6462 divided by 12, you're at about 28 bucks a month per home, twice-a-week compost center, et cetera, et cetera. So, those services, Alderman Palmer, are offered, but residents need to sign up for those, and they pay additional for twice-a-week collection in all four towns.
Pay some cash for your trash.
Yes.
But, then it also adds a lot of inefficiency to what you're doing. If you don't have everybody getting twice a week, and you've got to say, "Okay, this one's twice a week," I mean, doesn't that really screw up the works?
Huge. In all honesty, the, one side of me will say, "The private guys are doing it, we absolutely can do it." And we can, but you are absolutely correct. There is a good amount of inefficiency of, "We're opening up a route book, and Mrs. Smith on Mayflower wants twice a week, but her neighbor doesn't." And we're spending time flipping through and finding addresses versus go. Don't stop, just keep going, every house, go, go, go.
Isn't some of that offset by the economic cost associated with being able to pursue other businesses? In other words, that inefficiency could be made more efficient by going after schools and other business, where in the end, you'd have the savings of only going the one day, plus the additional revenue of being able to go out and secure profitable business?
Correct. If I understand your question, for us...
Because this is nothing more than a capacity game, really.
That's it, there it is.
You want to have a full truck out there, it's like the old milk home delivery, for goodness sake.
Correct, correct. That's it. And so, we're working to be as efficient as we can be every day of the week that our guys, that our guys are in providing those services, so.
Jack, what's a milk truck?
My job is to...
No, just kidding.
Hey.
For what it's worth...
That's a shock.
For what it's worth, I like having my garbage picked up twice a week. I think it's just one of those, I think there's a certain level of service that people in Lake Forest expect, and that it's one of the things that they like about living here. And I'll gladly pay $30 a year for it, but I think you're gonna, it's gonna be a bone of contention if you reduce to once a week.
You know, the other interesting thing, and this really is true, just like our building inspectors, our engineering inspectors, or anybody in our public works or Parks Forestry sections, they are literally an additional set of eyes and ears on the street. And there has been many a time where they've reported something, where they had a resident over on Old Mill a year ago, two years ago, and the winner fell, knocked her head, was knocked out completely. And Bob Wolf pulled in, she was bleeding everywhere, and not to say he was it, but the fact that we were able to pull into her long driveway and find her, called the ambulance, and help the resident out. But, yes, that's part of, there's a good amount of pride that the guys have in offering the service and talking to the residents and helping them out with anything they might have.
And kind of a closing comment, you know, as we're getting towards the 7:30 mark, how long do you think it would take, just to get some general numbers, some conservative numbers, where if we did cut back to one day a week and went into commercial collections, what the potential revenue could be? Because, again, as we look towards the one graph... Because again, as we look towards one graph where revenues are dropping, our expenses are increasing, to explore these opportunities, we need to get some ideas as we go forward, so.
We can bring, and this might be an idea we could bring back at our budget meeting in November, we could bring it back sooner. We're literally getting into, we're planning our capital for next year, all the various improvements in our capital plan, and beginning that budget process. We can bring it back to you as soon as you would like, but I want to make darn sure it's accurate, and it's something that we say, if we, if we say we can do it, we can do it. So, within a month or two, we could easily bring something back, and maybe it's something that is tied into the, the budget meeting in November, if, if that interests you.
Yeah, and just one other thought, has it ever been explored just to have a fee for the compost center, be it $5 or $10 a visit? Is it practical, or?
I, I would not want our attendants handling cash. I, if it's tickets, I would much rather have that. Where residents buy tickets at MS or City Hall and bring them in. But we have regulations that say residents can drop off two yards of material, which is the base, it's at the back of the garbage truck, is about two yards worth on Saturday, two yards on Sunday. Yard waste is unlimited, recycling is unlimited. But we've talked about that before, previous city councils did not like that idea, not to say you're different, you, you may think that's an additional, additional way of bringing in revenue.
Yeah, but other councils haven't been in situations like we are, where we're challenged for revenue. And in all honesty, as someone who's used that, I'd pay $10, $20 just to get rid of all the stuff they're hauling out there. Wouldn't really matter. So, just a thought, when you consider there's 26,000 visits, geez, $10 a visit, we're at a quarter million dollars right there. Obviously, usage would decrease, but maybe, yeah, it's something.
Could you clear something up for me?
Love to.
If, if we, if we go to once a week, we save $172,000. But we, we don't get to have that savings if we go collect private, because then we need those people.
Correct.
So...
But you get revenue, they pay for it.
But we, but we have those costs of 172 that we have to make up to before we make a dime of profit. This is right, or do I, do I have something wrong here?
Yes.
Go to collect private, we go to one day a week, and we don't lay anybody off or get rid of any equipment, and we work just as hard, and we spend the 172,000? This is a question. And then we try to make up the difference by not reducing our costs by the 172 and decreasing the service to our residents to once a week by picking up private to try to offset that 172?
I'm following you, and that opportunity cost you're suggesting is 175,000 that we need to cover in order to be able to go out and pick up those privates.
Can't go get revenue for private pickup, I'm, I'm, actually, is it true that we wouldn't get revenue for, we can't go, we can't pursue private pickup without going in one day a week?
Correct.
Okay. But we can't do private pickup without maintaining our current cost structure?
Correct. You're absolutely correct in what you're saying.
Yeah, Alderman Moore, I think, as I...
The private has to exceed 172 before it would make sense.
Right. I think what we'll do is, listening to your conversation here, when we come back to, whether it's November earlier, we will come back to you with options that say, if we go to once a week, here's what we could do with the manpower, and here's what the savings and what the new revenues would be. I think we'll also bring you back an option, if the council says, we don't want to give up twice a week, then if we were, and this is to Alderman Adelman's question, okay, so if we were to start to pick up the schools, then what would that cost us in terms of manpower and capital to do, and what would be the return? And I would say that one of the reasons maybe the staff is focused on the schools is because we see that if we can save them a dollar, we're saving the taxpayers a dollar. I mean, between the city and the two school districts, we represent 75% of their, of their tax bill. And so, we're looking at ways, not to, for us to just make money, but are there ways that we can also help just generally the taxpayer?
And wouldn't it be possible, I mean, the schools are a chip shot, right? So, in other words, for you, just to add the schools, you could do that without changing anything, right?
Yep. Good. That isn't that significant to us. Again, we're in the neighborhoods. Depending upon if they want Wednesday, Saturday, Sunday, we got to talk a little bit about that, but we can absolutely make it happen. Yes.
Moore's worried about the high school, I think, than anything, just by sheer volume. The grade schools are real easy. It's the high school, and maybe middle school, based on their volume, that would, I think, you have to look at closely.
But it's, you're absolutely right. Again, we're there twice a week, and if that's acceptable to them, great. If we need to add a third or fourth collection day, we could do that, sure.
Hey, Michael, we're getting close to 7:30. Could you just ask Lou to stand up and take a bow? Because over the years, I've dealt with him, and he's been fantastic.
Sure. Lou Decker, Lou? Lou is our Streets and Sands Supervisor, he's been with us for 15 years.
Way back to Louis.
Come on up, come on up, Louis. Lou, Lou and his brother...
At home wants to see who you are too, just in case they have a missed pickup tomorrow, they want to know who to call.
Lou and his, Lou comes from a refuse collection, his father owned disposal company, and Lou and his brother owned Ace Disposal for many years. So, Lou came to us from the private side, knows the private side very well, and that's why he wanted to make us lean and mean, so we're very proud of him.
Well, he provides service like he's working for the private sector, he really does, and I didn't want it to go unappreciated and unnoted.
And the successes...
Speak in the microphone, please.
The successes we have made here have not, you know, everything to do with me. You've approved the equipment that we needed to make ourselves more efficient. I mean, we've gone from 20 down to 14 in five, and I think Mr. Colley amended to it that, no, at present services that you have now, we can't go any lower, or much lower. But we're trying to find creative ways to be able to help the revenue flow within the city, and it's a decision you're going to have to make, so. But it's an honor to work in this community and provide the service for an absolutely phenomenal resident base. It's a joy to work in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the council on this? I think we've gotten very good direction, and we'll bring some stuff back to you at your budget meeting later this fall.
Thanks very much, thanks, Mike. Next on our, on the agenda is other matters. Are there any other matters for discussion? Hearing none. Next is opportunity for public comment. Anybody from the public want to comment on anything that we are discussing at the committee of the whole meeting? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're adjourned.